Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and welcome to our school committee meeting of this Wednesday, March 20th, 2019. It is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, and indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. I think I forgot to do this at maybe the last two meetings, but I sort of remind everyone that we are being broadcast live on our cable network as well as being recorded for future rebroadcast. So first up, we have our student representatives, Katie Huff and Natalie.
Natalie coming up first and then.
Oh, okay, going to do it separately, okay.
Hi.
Hi.
So we have course selections. Everybody returning to school next year, so not the seniors, have made their selections for their classes next year. Student council went to the Cape a few weeks ago for their statewide conference. We had a lot of fun there. There's a college planning night in the auditorium tonight. The senior class trip is coming up and there is a parent meeting on March 27th. Seniors recently received a scholarship packet from Guidance and we have those to fill out, which are due the day before we leave for Disney. Spring sports have started. They started just Monday. Upcoming, we have Tiger Jam, which is on March 30th. It is a concert including students, faculty, and alumni, and they're accompanied by our husband, the Hortons. Mr. DHS is also coming up, which is a kind of beauty pageant type thing for seniors at Douglas.
What do you think of it as a talent show?
Yeah, not a beauty pageant, but it's like this, it's, yeah. We're working on that. And that's on April 10th. English MCAS is on March 26th and March 27th. There's an SAT prep course at DHS on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And there's going to be a blood drive on April 8th, which I believe is a senior project. And then we've had graduation polls for seniors to vote on what our like class colors or class songs, and everything will be for graduation. So, do you have any questions?
Did you go to the Cape?
Yes, they did.
Did you go? How was the water?
It was 38 degrees, I think it said.
Perfect.
Online, yeah, and it was 27 degrees in the air.
And you went in the water?
Yes.
Is that why this question was asked?
Yeah, we had a polar plunge.
Polar plunge, okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's, we raise, each school that does it raises money for Special Olympics.
Excellent.
So I think we raised almost, I think we raised like $45,000 or something, so.
Wow, that's awesome.
That's great.
The Tiger Gym is here in the auditorium?
Yes.
Great.
Always a great show.
Yeah.
Always a great show. And the MCAS that Natalie mentioned, this will be the first year online at the high school.
All right.
So that's the first, first chance of us doing it online with the Chromebooks and I know Mrs. Souza and Mr. Romano have been planning for that, so we should be all set for this next week, right?
Is there a fallback plan if that doesn't work? Do we have the pen and paper ready to go?
If it only works, it's.
We have, if it doesn't work, we have a problem.
Figure it out.
Okay.
So it's going to work.
I trust in.
And the graduation conversations have begun.
Yes.
Excellent.
That time of year. Spring has sprung.
Yep.
Very good, thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
So at this point, we are at our public comment and communication section, so the school committee, oh, is Katie coming up to do middle school? No, that's, that's the other issue, right?
That's the other issue.
Okay, thank you, that's, I was okay. So we'll just open for our public comment section for items that are within the scope of our responsibilities, but not on our agenda tonight. Anyone here for something not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on. Any old business the committee would like to address tonight? Seeing none. Any new business the committee would like to address? Seeing none. So before we get to the superintendent's report, we do have Katie's here for another reason, which is in our consent agenda, and we want to just move that up so we don't keep her here until all hours of the night. So I'd like to, have a motion to move the, I'm sorry, which item are we moving up?
It's the best buddies.
The best buddies.
Build a school best buddies program.
Just to move that up, take that out of order?
Make a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to move the DMS, do student activity account best buddies up to, which one, superintendent report?
Both, yes, superintendent report. Take that out of order now. We have a motion from Jillian.
Second.
And a second from Lisa. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Katie, thank you.
Mrs. Urquhart, Mr. Delaney will be joining.
Excellent.
As well.
This is yours.
You're the star.
There you go, lady.
All right, so Dear Douglas School Committee, as you may be aware, the Douglas Middle School has been adapting and building a best buddies program. This program is open to all students in the Douglas Middle School and is a dynamic, nonprofit establishment dedicated to enhancing the lives of people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The best buddies organization is a mission to attract, retain, and develop the best and brightest skills of our, the best and brightest talents of our participants. This organization provides our peers in special education to feel more included and welcomed into the Douglas Middle School's educational environment and overall school climate. We want this to be a positive experience for all students in the middle school in order to make new relationships, adapt to an ever-changing environment, and take on new responsibilities as they grow. Allowing this program to continue would be a beneficial addition to our middle school by giving students an opportunity to become more involved in new surroundings, make others feel more included, and encourage kindness throughout the building to make it the best place it can be. Encouraging this positive social movement that will hopefully help break social and emotional barriers is one that we should all take in consideration at the Douglas Public School District. Thank you for your time and we hope too, and we, and we hope you too can support our best buddies program.
Thank you.
This is our time, Mr. Delaney, anything you would like to share with us?
She pretty much took the whole thing.
I would like to take full credit for Katie's incredible talent. She was nothing before she came to Douglas Middle School, and now she is the brilliant individual you see before you.
Correct. Yes.
So one of the things that we talked about today, and Katie obviously was not at our admin meeting yet, she might be in, next week she might be joining us.
Yes.
We talked a little bit about how we have this best buddies program presently at the high school and if we could implement it at the middle school and then try to form a collaboration between the two schools going forward and do some activities with both schools involved, which we think would be a wonderful idea, so.
How long have we been at the high school now? It's only been a couple of years.
It's the first full year.
First full year, okay, that's what I thought.
Started, we voted it in late last year.
I think it's great to see the middle school following close on their heels.
It was Katie's idea.
It was, yep.
Fantastic, thank you.
Fully her brainchild and of her, of her efforts, and it's grown from there, and we're here tonight only because of her vision for it.
It doesn't surprise me.
How was, how was the support of your peers? Are you running this solo or you got some, some folks that have? I have a student representative in sixth grade that's also helping me out, and besides that, it's basically all me.
Just getting started.
We're getting there, though.
We had a question, why don't you sign up?
Definitely, we had.
And they are involved.
Yep.
Absolutely, great.
She's leading the charge.
That's great.
And so it's a little bit unique. Mrs. Urquhart has volunteered to serve as the advisor for the remainder of the school year, and before the school year is out, we'll come back with a, with a full plan to have an advisor appointed and stipend for that as well. We'll negotiate with the DTA and go from there. But this, this will allow us the opportunity to get it started as, as we get close to the end of the school year, and then when they come back next year, it'll be in full, full force and we'll go from there.
Okay. Any other questions?
Question.
Okay. If not, be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the establishment of the Douglas Middle School Student Activity Fund Account entitled Best Buddies for the Purpose of Bringing Students With and Without Disabilities Together for the Purpose of Creating Opportunities for One-to-One Friendships, Leadership Development, and Other Social Activities.
Motion from Jillian.
Second.
And a second from Lisa. Any other discussion or comment? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing, they're all unanimous. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the initiative. Excellent.
Okay. So with that, we'll come back to our superintendent's report, Mr. Mainz.
Okay, very good. Mrs. Urquhart, please do not sit down. And Mr. Romano, if you want to join us as well. One of the things that I'm, I'm very excited about, and they'll share with you all the details, but we've been trying to really get a true unified sports program begun in the district. Unified sports is, is something that is desperately needed here, so I'll let Neely talk to it and Josh talk to it, but I'm just, I'm just pleased that we've got, we've got this going.
Sure.
So, you know, basically about, about a year ago, there was a director's meeting and everybody started talking about the concept of unified sports and what they were doing within their district. And everybody at that point was sort of doing it on their own, you know, and unify, the concept of unified sports is that it is a, it's acknowledged by the MIAA as.
As a sport.
As a sport. So it's this idea of students with disabilities being paired up with students who do not have disabilities and working together. We sort of went back and forth and we talked about as a district, what is our vision for this? Is it a situation where we want to compete against other districts or is it a situation where we want to start within? So again, through speaking amongst each other, as well as speaking to the other districts, it seems like what makes most sense right now is, is this year we have an opportunity to participate in something in Hope Dale. It's, they have their own, where is it?
Community building in Hope Dale, they have their own bowling alleys in the basement in, of the community building, really nice. It's, it's been there for a very long time, but it's, it's really kind of quaint and unique and so forth, right across the street from the gym, the Draper Gym.
They do a lot of the bowling activities for a lot of different reasons, and, and what they've done is they contacted Mary Sokol, the athletic director at the high school, and they offered up the opportunity for this unified sports opportunity. And basically, it's, it's going to be five different districts and everybody's going to have a lane, and for us, we're going to have our students with intensive special needs at the high school level right now paired up with their best buddies, and we're going to compete against the other districts. So, so this year, it's going to be that one activity. We're going to see how it goes. And then next year, what we talked about is really, we want to make sure that the unified sports athletes and that our athletes that currently participate in track, basketball, softball, whatever it might be, are able to compete together. So the unified sport would be opposite of the quote-unquote typical sport. So let's say in the winter, we typically have basketball. We would want the unified sports piece to be for basketball, let's say in the spring, so.
So the basketball players.
So the basketball athletes can be on the.
Because technically by the MIAA, they would be recognized as a sports, because unified sports is a, is a recognized sport.
Exactly. So for next year, we're thinking three activities. At this point, we'll compete within ourselves, and then looking at the following year, that's when we'll, we'll open it up to other districts, so. You're up.
I think that's great.
What Neely said is what it is.
We, we, we've been talking about this when I was the principal of the high school. Had to be six years ago, we, I brought it up, and everybody was on board, but it just never, it just never got done because everybody was too busy. So I thank Josh and Neely for continuing to move it forward. The hope is that by the 2021 school year, that it's really, everybody in the dual valley is on board and, and we'll, we'll be able to expand it a little bit. It is a natural system, the natural feeder for the best buddies program, as well as for student athletes as well, to, to participate. My hope is that you'll see it grow and it will become a highlight of, of our schools.
So I got a question.
The bowling is the first, the first, first attempt at, at getting this off the ground, which I'm really happy about.
So I have a question, it's either going to show my age, my ignorance, or both. Do varsity students still letter? Do we consider, do they get lettered?
Yeah, they do, yeah.
So are these, are these lettered, considered, considered a lettered program?
It's a sport, yeah.
Down the road, it will be, there's a little bit of nuances for us to work out as to who's managing it and so forth and so on, so, and some stipends and things that we'll be working on.
Yeah, so this year, the, you know, the Hope Dale piece, that's, that's going to be sort of, you know, parents are going to drop the kids off, it's, it's on a volunteer basis for the staff. We're sort of doing it the way we do Team Night Out.
Team Night Out, right.
And we're just going to get a feel for it, you know, and.
It's the framework that we'll build it around in the future, and Exbridge does basically the same thing, so I can seal it further down the line. If other schools are doing these sort of single event things, that becomes the league, if you will. And if you want to really feel old, Brett, we actually are starting, we're looking at an esports team for college athletics, too. I'm not kidding, but they play video games and it counts as a varsity sport.
Esports, it is, it is a thing.
It is a thing.
It is.
So.
Not ready for that, but.
It's different.
Time will watch on.
So, you know, we budgeted, it's, it's not very expensive to add. We budgeted some money for t-shirts at first, but eventually, you know, they're athletes, they should have uniforms.
Yeah.
And some transportation costs, and, you know, a lot of the rest of it, we can do in-house.
Great.
So it's, it's very small investment for a really big reward, and, you know, we'd really like to see our athletes be able to participate competitively with other schools. That's, you know, I think that's, that's what they're going to want, too, is that competitive aspect of it, too, so.
We have some competitive kids.
No, yeah.
And Neely, the date of that, of the bowling is?
April 26th.
Thank you.
Six o'clock.
Great.
It's right, it's right adjacent to the high school in the, the Draper Gym, and it's across the street, and it's in the basement.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Are we good?
Cool, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Romano, don't go.
I thought I still had more, yeah.
So the next thing is that we are, been meeting over the last two weeks to once again conduct a mock accident here at the high school. We've done this now three times. We do it every other year, we do juniors and seniors. John Ferno, who is right now outside dealing with another issue for us, but Brett Falone, Tony Yanino, Chief Vincent, Chief Miglianico, Jackman Funeral Home, the Hortons, a number of students, the admin. And, and we'll be presenting it on the, the Thursday, the day before the prom, so it is May?
8th.
9th.
9th.
May 9th, in the morning. We've begun, the, the meetings have taken, have begun. We have a group of students who have been, who volunteered to participate in it. It's a very moving, emotional type of activity. Actually, Josh's, this will be Josh's first because it's the first time he's seen it.
I've never done it before.
We have former parents in the audience here. Mr. Delaney has been a father and as Mrs. Urquhart has been a mother for the event. There's an actual scene role play where they have served as parents in, in different times. Very emotional. I hope that if you're able to attend, that you'll join us. For me, this will be the 20th presentation that I've been involved in, and at this point, based on everything, it'll be my last, so. Mr. Romano, anything?
I am looking forward to it. It's been a lot of work. And Mr. Don, of course, heavily involved in it, too, Ms. Sokol, so there's a lot of people.
Mr. Sokol, yeah.
There's a lot of people involved, and I think it'll be a very rewarding event, so keeping it quiet among the kids, but.
Right, and it's rain or shine. If it's raining, we've done it in the rain, and we've done it, we've done it in nice weather, and we've done it in cold weather. It is what it is. We'll go up, do it. There is, by the way, an opportunity that will go home to parents for junior and seniors, for parents to opt their child, child out of it, should they not wish to have them participate in it, and we'll have something for them to, to engage in.
And guidance.
It does involve all of the juniors and seniors coming down to the presentation. It's, it's pretty good. Well, hopefully, hopefully it'll have the impact that we're looking for, especially right before prom and graduation and so forth. So, very good.
Excellent.
Any questions on that?
None.
So, Mr. Romano, don't go anywhere. So, Mr. Romano, recently with members of, at the high school, had a meeting with eighth grade parents, so I thought it would be nice if he could share with you what, what transpired, the, the turnout and so forth.
So we had, what do you think, it was about 40 to 50 parents or so?
Like that.
Which, you know, was.
Way more than usual.
Way more than, I was afraid it was going to be when it was about five minutes prior and there were about six people there, so.
I showed up last minute, of course.
Very good.
That was good, though, you showed up when there were parents, so that was, that was really good. So basically, what we, what I wanted to do was, was kind of, you know, this is a point where parents and kids make the decision about, are they going to go to BBT? Are they going to stay on in the Douglas schools? Are they going to look at private schools or school choice and other things? And so we wanted to kind of help them to make that informed choice. You know, they get a whole K-9 equine extravaganza when BBT shows up, so this was, this was our effort to sort of offer up our song and dance. And I made a plan that was a little more complicated than it needed to be. We'll, we'll slim it down a little bit, but basically, the parents went to a seminar or workshop on what we have for athletics, how the academics work here, what kind of extracurricular opportunities there are, and took a tour of the school. And that included seeing like the robotics lab, the art rooms, the, the library, you know, kind of the, the nice spaces that we have, one of the chemistry labs, and try to show off that stuff and not the flood damage, which is really coming along. And, and then they had cupcakes that Ms. Delphos' bad crew made in the cafeteria, and, you know, I think, other than it being an overly complicated plan, I think the staff that were here and the kids who did the tours, I think that they did a great job, including Jill's daughter, who did a little of the, yeah, I went to BBT for a year, I came back here. Kind of.
She did.
We didn't encourage her to say that, but she offered.
She did that all on her own.
She did that on her own. And I did have a few parents, I had three parents over the course of the night who came to me saying, you know, you know, we are looking at BBT, but they wanted to come in and hear what we had to offer, too, and so, and that really was, you know, one of the audiences that we wanted to, to get to, as well as, you know, parents who, you know, if it's your first child coming into high school, it's nerve wracking, it's a lot more free time that kids have or unstructured time in high school and middle school, so it can be kind of nerve wracking for parents. So we were trying to maybe address some of those and maybe make sure that parents knew like what some of the opportunities are that, that kids can have when they come up here, so.
Which I think is a great thing. We know that we've been doing different things. This is, this is another opportunity to try to influence parents, to share with them what's going on, get them in the building so they can see the building, walk around the building to know what we have to offer here, so I kudos to Josh for pulling it together. I know he's already gone down to the school, at the middle school, once or twice already. We've already had the eighth graders sign up for courses, course selection process already for next year, so people have got their courses in there. So the hope is that they, they find it a, a place that they want to attend, so.
I learned that there was a shop here, I didn't even know that.
Oh, yeah.
See, that's what we wanted to make sure people knew. The shop was on there, too, yep, that was on the tutorial list, the robotics lab, you know, some of the, kind of the cool things that we have.
And that shop ties into what we have been talking about with, and I'm going to talk in a minute about this request from the, the representative, but it ties in because it's, it gives us an opportunity to host it and have students come to us that other buildings that just don't have that type of a manufacturing lab. So it's, it's a nice piece for us to, to have, I'm glad we hung on to it when all is said and done. All right.
Excellent.
Don't go anywhere. Follow-up on graduation. Josh did a survey.
These are the latest numbers, and I, I checked it again after I talked to you this morning, Mr. Mainz.
Yep.
And so there's, I think it's 110 respondents now, and the, the decision has been made clear that we don't know what to do, because it's 43% keep it at DHS, 57% Worcester State. The Worcester State 57% is split 29 to 28%, so equally between doing it on Friday and doing it on Sunday.
So we're going to do it Saturday morning here.
Yeah.
So we're going to do it Saturday morning halfway between here and Worcester. So I, I, I don't know, you, tell me what you think, because it's not like there's a strong mandate to move it.
So.
I can tell you what my inclination is, and it's going to make Desi Vega want to punch me in the face, but.
No, so I'll, I'll just give my quick thoughts. We, we tried. Clearly, there's not a clear answer there. I think, you know, at some point, this board has to make hard decisions, this committee, so I think it comes down to probably taking a recommendation from you and us just having to make a call, so.
We did check some other places, and I, I have some of the, the DCU is, is available, but very expensive. It's double Worcester State, same with Mechanics Hall.
Yeah.
Which, you know, they're beautiful venues.
Right.
But you pay for beautiful venues.
Yep.
Where Worcester State, Worcester State's in at just under 2,700. The DCU is 7,500, Mechanics Hall 7,600. Holy Cross does not rent out to groups larger than 500 people. We tried Bryant, they weren't available anytime around our graduation weekend, and we're still waiting for a callback from Hanover Theater, but, you know, I know that Desi's thoughts is, are that we really should push it out there, but I, 43% of, if you don't have like a, my, my thought is if you don't have a really strong mandate to change, then you probably want to keep it the same.
Well, but I also think that some of these people have never, maybe experienced graduation, too, so you have to keep that in mind. I mean, we're putting these kids into the real world, this is their opportunity to start like moving their bodies off campus kind of thing, too. But that's my thought on that.
If it was more, you know, one-third, keep it here, two-thirds move it, I'd feel a little more comfortable, but, you know.
Fifty-fifty.
Yeah, it's a.
A recommendation would be that we, we keep on, we, we're going to talk about the calendar later on, so my recommendation would be keep it on the Friday for right now as it is. We can always make an adjustment, it doesn't involve the Douglas Teachers Association, it's an after-school activity, so we can move it if we want to, you know, continue to explore some of the other venues that might be out there and, and then make a decision. There's no hurry to make a decision because we've, we're a year and a half away from it, so it's, it's not like.
The only issue with that is celebration of graduation.
So, so the issue with.
Right now, they've been holding both Friday and Sunday for next year, waiting to, and they have to make a decision as to which one that.
Exbridge has to wait on us?
Yeah.
That's good. Oh, I'm very, I love, I do a lot of stuff with Exbridge now, so.
Right.
I'm sure I'll hear about it on, I have a meeting on Friday at Exbridge, and I'm sure I'll hear about it from them.
Why do they have to wait on us? Because they want the venue?
They want the other date.
Right.
So the other, the other issue was that if you did it on Friday night, the traffic the traffic issue was a concern. So the, the smart thing to do if you're going to do it at Worcester State would be to do it a little bit later at seven o'clock where it's not as much traffic. But then you'd have to move the celebration graduation event.
So who, who do we, who do we pull this, this time?
Junior parents and stu-, and students.
So the only thing I'm thinking, you know, you're going to kill me, but do we just keep backing this up and give ourselves a longer runway and say, "Okay, let's check with the sophomores and tee it up for two years from now?"
Honestly, that's what I'm kind of thinking. Yeah.
What about, didn't we talk about having like an open meeting so that?
Yeah, I, I wanted to see how the, the survey came out first, and I don't know. I'm just thinking it's not.
Maybe do a sophomore, junior, parent, student, survey, media, presentation in the audience.
Sure, and then we can pull.
And say, "This is what we're thinking. We're looking for your feedback," and then encourage them to take the survey and then make the decision from there.
Somebody's here for you. I wonder if, if we do do a presentation, like show people what the venue looks like.
Show the venue and.
Show people what it looks like, what it's, what happens when we don't know if it's going to rain or shine. Show them.
Can we get a video of someone else's?
Just, I think that people need some video and some visuals.
Because it does, I'm sure it looks nicer when it's decorated for graduation than it does when it's set up for basketball. But not that it's unattractive.
Another school that's been there, I'm sure there's got to be a video available.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'll set up a, set up an informational night for, maybe we can piggyback it on something else.
The other option is for Josh is make the, make the wrong, wrong decision every year for the next 20 years.
It's a rite of passage at this point, you know?
It kind of is, and you know, I, because I watched Mr. Mainz go through his last year's principal, and, and I said, "Boy, I'm glad I'm not him." And then I had to do the exact same thing the next year. And.
I haven't, I haven't had a very good track record either, I can tell you that.
No, you also have a bigger.
Also too, I mean, we can, we can see how this year goes. And if it's another fist, not fist fight, but another argument in the parking lot, I think that's a little bit more like.
All right, enough.
Yeah, you know, and.
But there's a haze next year, so it's going to be inside.
There's a haze inside, so it's going to rain. Well, it's going to be sunny, but inside, because there's a haze next year. So that's just how it goes. So.
Like I said, nobody, Josh nor, nor I wanted to ruin anybody's graduation.
Oh, sure. It's not about that at all. I think that it's a, it's a conversation that's okay to have. And regardless of what happens, happens, but.
Okay, I'll set something up.
All right, so we're definitely, absolutely 100% sure that we don't know what we're doing just yet.
I would recommend that we maybe just keep it the same for next year, and then look at it further down the line.
I'll, I'll work with you, and we'll try to get that meeting together and break the presentation, and let that be the, the deal breaker at that point.
People definitely want to, on a Friday, if it was here, would they consider Sunday?
You know, I didn't ask that. I mean, to my, to my reasoning, like I honestly thought Worcester State on Friday would be the one that was the least popular, because it just, you know, it, it kind of does strike me as being a little bit of a pain.
Traffic is going to get there and so forth, right?
Yeah, where Sunday I think is just a nice, I don't know, easy like Sunday morning. But I was a little surprised about that. I, I thought Worcester State Friday would be a very unpopular choice, but it was, it was split. But, you know, not a strong mandate on which way for me to go.
Right. All right, we'll give it one more shot, and then we, we either table it, get rid of it, or we, or we make, we pull the, we make the decision to go ahead and do it.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Don't go anywhere yet, though. Oh, actually, you can.
He's all set now, right?
You can go sit for a second.
Okay, all right.
Do I need to go see John? Do I need to go see John?
At your place, I gave you a, a letter that was mailed and emailed to Senator Fatman and to Representative McKenna, which I'm glad we gave it to them now, because they are coming out on the third to meet with us as well. Basically, it, it, it goes to the issue of trying to develop that Blackstone Valley Superintendent Consortium, developing distance learning and courses, much like I just mentioned, Julie, about the, the lab, that we want to do a manufacturing course next year. And this is a formal request from the 13 towns that make up, school districts that make up the Blackstone Valley Superintendent Consortium, looking for them to support the, the idea of the first course being a STEM-related course, and looking for them to see if there is a way for them to support us with some seed money that might be helpful to help us offset some of the initial costs to get this program started. And so just basically wanted to share with you that that letter went out from all of the different superintendents in the area to their representative and their senators in support of this, this idea. Much like the best buddies, I mean, the Unified Sports being the, the first voyage, this course next year hopefully being the first attempt to make this happen, and we build on it from there. So I just wanted to share with you that I sent that letter out to them, that all of the districts had sent that letter as well. If there's any questions on it, and hopefully.
No, I was, I was glad to see this. You know, I didn't, you know, I know part of the consortium, what you guys have been working on, but I didn't know you guys were working on this. I was pleasantly surprised to see.
And Josh is on the subcommittee, and that, it really came out of the subcommittee, this, this idea. So it's, it's really the subcommittee that's pushing it. Again, the hope is that we can get that first course off the ground, and then we can build from there. And I think that there is, there's real interest in it, because I think people are realizing that it benefits everyone. Because it makes it, makes more academic opportunities available to students throughout the Blackstone Valley that they would not have if they were just in their own school.
So I'm assuming all the superintendents are on board with this plan and this letter?
There's one school that didn't join us on this first endeavor. They don't really need to engage in technical educational opportunities. They have plenty of them.
Okay. Yeah, that's actually where I was going. How do they feel about this whole process?
I think down the road that they feel, they see there's a benefit in it down the road possibly for taking courses. The hard part for them is going to be their, their, their structure of their, of their academics as compared to everybody else's.
Okay.
They, they were not, they were not opposed to it.
Okay, it's, okay. Yeah, how do we want to handle this? Mr. Mainz needs to attend to an issue briefly. Do we take a recess?
Yeah, we can recess.
All right. I'd like to accept a motion to take a five to 10-minute recess.
I'll make a motion to take a five to 10-minute recess.
Motion from Julian, second from Lisa. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We are on a five to 10-minute recess. All right. Welcome back. We are back in session after a brief recess there. Mr. Mainz is still out of the room, but we're going to continue without him. So next on our agenda is our school committee and subcommittee reports. First up being our accounts payable report.
On 3/7/2019, I signed 13 batches totaling $199,164.12. And there was nothing that jumped out at me.
Great. So it's just the ones that are batches? Great.
Yep.
A little ahead of the scent. Thank you. And then next on our agenda is school bus route reconfiguration. So we had spoke last week, last meeting, I should say, about the fact that our school bus contract is expiring at the, at the end of the school year. We have been working with the town administrator, who has asked us to engage with a consultant to look at reconfiguring our routes in, in an effort to try to save some money on our busing costs. Those, those costs have grown considerably over time. We're in a, we as well as the rest of the state and probably the rest of the country in a difficult predicament where we only get one bid, and we're kind of at the mercy of whatever price they want to give us for the most part. So really, the only way to truly try to save money there is to try to reduce the number of routes. So we have engaged with a consultant. They've come back to us with some proposals. But I think we as a committee have some decisions to make around how comfortable we are with those proposals before we move too much farther. So just to give some context, Ms. Keegan, please jump in if I go astray here at all. The first proposal he came up with, actually, I'll give some more context. With Douglas, we have a, a space issue. We don't necessarily have a ridership issue. Our, our bus routes take time because of the amount of distance we have to cover within Douglas, because we have a giant state forest sitting in the middle of our town that, you know, buses have to drive through to get kids. And so we have, you know, 13 different regular education bus routes out there with buses that probably, in many cases, are half full or so. But they take time to get kids, you know, all the way out from across the town and back to the schools. Bus routes tend to run anywhere from, you know, the, the longest route for the kid that's either picked up first in the morning or dropped off last at night. Some routes are as, you know, short as only 20, 25 minutes. Some routes go as long as 40, 45. And I think, you know, in the data Courtney collected, there was one that ran 50 minutes to the, to the last route on one particular day. I don't know if that's a norm or not, but let's just assume it's, it's a, you know, normally in the 45-minute range for the last drop off. So the, but, you know, they tend to run more in the 30, 35 for your, for your longest riders, which, you know, seems pretty reasonable. The, the proposal that the consultants come up with, almost all of it, you know, eliminates three routes. So it takes us from 13 out of 10 routes. But almost all the routes go up to the longest ridership would now be in the 45-minute range or even, you know, 48 minutes, I think, is, you know, is the longest one he showed there. But, you know, we, we're suspicious, you know, not necessarily suspicious, but we know that there's probably some room for error there where that 48 could end up being 53 minutes, or, you know, depending on what happens, or, you know, all the, some of the assumptions that he uses in his model. So. So two things. I think Courtney and Kevin have been very cautious about this. Rightly so, knowing that, you know, 45 minutes is already a long time to be on a bus for some kids, not, you know, not all of them there, but, you know, some are already there, and to extend that for, beyond that, you know, is, is a difficult decision, and to have even more kids riding the bus for 45 minutes or longer is, is a difficult decision. They've done lots of work on our routes in the past and feel that, you know, where we have them is probably at an ideal place. Second thing is, you know, we've already expressed to the consultant that we felt three routes is, is definitely aggressive. The town administrator even agreed that three routes is aggressive, and that, you know, we shouldn't be considering limiting any more than two routes. And just, you know, before I get to some of the, some of the route data, the last thing is just, you know, while, you know, I wanted to be sensitive, sensitive to the length of rides that, that our students are going to be on either to or from schools, I do think it's important for us to uncover every rock, even if that rock has been uncovered in the past, to try to find ways for, for the town to save money. Because that is the only way we're going to get money to keep investing in our, in our district. You know, just, I know we got an override last year, but that money went away real quick. All that, all that override did was got us off the cliff and kind of back to where we were four or five years ago. But we'll be back on the cliff in five years if, if we don't find ways to save money in any way we possibly can and, and invest in ways that are going to bring revenues, you know, back into the town and help, help us expand our revenue base. So. You know, so with that, you know, I think we have to consider, you know, how comfortable we are with having almost all of our, you know, routes extend into our longest rides being in the 40, 45, possibly 50-minute range. Would you add anything else, Ms. Keegan?
The only thing I do want to mention that we haven't discussed to this point is given the, I guess, for lack of a better way of putting it, the difficulties today that you can have. We do have, you know, bus behavior issues now on buses. And, you know, just, just, just one other concern that I do have. And then if we end up, if it ends up, ends up becoming a, a safety issue, and then we're required to hire bus monitors for all of the buses, I don't know what impact that would have. But that would be one concern that I would have.
We're in a place now where we don't have heavy loaded buses, but we do have some long ride times, but we also don't have monitors. So I think those factors probably play together that we don't have a ton of issues. Now you start loading your buses more, longer ride times, no monitors. Now do you start seeing more issues?
More students.
The other thing to consider too is that we can go out to bid with 11 routes, let's say. So we eliminate two of them, go out to bid with 11 routes, you know, come back, we get some savings. I, you know, I do think there was some recourse that if we come to September and it's a disaster, we can work with the bus company, whoever we end up with to, "Okay, we're going to add a route here and reconfigure things." You know, it'll, it'll be a fire drill and be insane, but, you know, we, we can do that if, if we see fit. So. I don't know. Am I speaking out of turn there?
Well, no, because actually the way that, well, the way that all IFBs, and that's invitation for bids as opposed to RFPs, are done by all school districts is, yes, we do have a per-bus fee, you know, added on, and part of the invitation for bids. And even different size buses too, you'll have on the earth, because depending on the size bus you need. So my only concern would be, because the answer, we did not receive an answer to if we did have to add a bus. For instance, if we did have a number of kindergarten as it came, and we did have to add a bus, never mind even all these other issues that we've discussed. If we only have a certain amount in the appropriation, and if, if the savings were given to the school department operating budget.
Would they have to be pulled out of that?
Well, and that would be very difficult, because as you know, we start off our year, the middle school has done scheduling, the high school has done scheduling. Students have chosen courses. You have teachers teaching particular grades, classes. You know, there's a lot of work that goes into that by the full administration to make sure that we start off our year properly and have something happen at special town meeting where they, and we just don't know if that would happen. In November would be very bad for the school department. And we haven't received an answer to that, you know, with regard to how that would play out. Yes.
So do we have to make a decision about this?
Well, the other thing, so that the consultant, you know, dropped some data in our laps last week, and then went on vacation this week. So we're in a bit of a holding pattern with him. So I think we'll be on top of that again early next week to, to have him adjust the proposals to, you know, reduce no more than two routes. And I'd even like to see what the proposal looks like if we just reduce one route, and what does that do to our ride times and, and loads and whatnot. So. But we're already, I would say, well behind when we normally have gone out to bid for our contracts.
The way that, if I had a decision-making process, and I know that, that the town administrator brought it up that once we went out to bid in March, but we had just moved into two brand-new buildings. We had, we were, in the summertime, we were at the high school, and then we had to move, you know, to another building, and then, you know, that was when the school projects were being done. That would not be the time I would ever go out to bid, because our contracts end June 30th. In fact, Mrs. Rickhart's summer program, special summer program, normally, typically, we use Telstone buses as our regular bus contract. That begins, what is it, the second week in July? Oh, July 3rd, July. Oh, okay. So even a little bit earlier than typically. So we may be paying more for that transportation.
We'll be trying to act as quickly as possible once we do make a decision. So I think, you know, I didn't put on the consent agenda, but I, you know, I almost, I don't know. I'd like to hear your thoughts if anyone has any, any strong opinions on this, and whether this is something that we need to address with a. opinions on this and whether this is something that we need to address with a formal policy or, I don't know, how, how do we want to deal with this?
Oh, I hate, I hate to say that we need to do another study, but I've already expressed my concern that I don't think that will quite impact myself, but I'm thinking of other children that live really far away, 50 minutes. Like you said, that's a long time. And with the vaping that's going on, there's no, it's just not, I don't agree with that. I don't think for the cost savings, it's not worth it for our children.
Do we know, do we know what the cost savings are?
Oh, we wouldn't, we would not have any idea until we go out to bid.
Once the bid is done.
But, you know, say, if we were to base it on, you know, currently, it would be, two buses would be around $120,000. Just say roughly. But we have no idea what the bid's going to come in as.
About $60,000 per route.
Because it, I don't even know what bid process, I, this whole-
Well, we've got to have a ballpark idea. So based on current, current contract, it's about $60,000 per route.
Well, I think there's a lot of things to think about. I mean, there's other towns that, that, you know, we've talked about this, about the parents paying for, for busing and we, we didn't go that route and for obvious reasons. But it is something that we need to start entertaining because there's only so much money that we can be playing with. And, you know, there's an option, too. People can drive their kids to school, you know, it's, it's, sounds insensitive.
Which, which does lead to one, one concern, which is the high school-
Oh, yes.
Right.
-is because of the one-way and one-way out and, and, and the, the backup of, of traffic that goes all the way down Route 16 as it is now. And now you'll be, you'll be on 16 at this point. So, but I understand your point.
It's something that we really need to entertain.
Right, right. But, you know, we, for those who remember when we made the decision, had to be seven years ago, six years ago, to consolidate from three runs to two runs, one of the concerns that came up was, well, what's going to be the impact to drive time, pickup times, drop-off times? And so this is a little bit different because now I think what's going to end up happening is inevitably, drive times are just going to be longer. Somewhere in the area of 40, 45 to 50 minutes for a route to be completed. The, the pickup times are a little bit, a couple of minutes earlier, five minutes earlier in one case that we've looked at. That's now 6:29, I believe, is the earliest pickup, which, if you have a student who goes to BBT, it might be 6:15 they get picked up because it's, but that's a different story because they're covering a, a territory and going to a, a town, you know, 10, 15 minutes away as well. So it, it, it's worth the exploration, I suppose, but I think that my concern is going to be that the, will the cost savings outweigh what's going to happen in September when my kid's been on the bus for 55 minutes or, and so forth, because the route, that's my, that's my concern as well. And then do we, do we need to add a bus? And if so, it's, you know, how we pay, who's paying for it? How are we paying for it? And so forth as well. So-
Yeah, I brought that up, too, yeah.
I just, I live in towns in Mass, so I literally drive from the Rhode Island border to the Hampshire border.
Yeah.
I don't think a kid going home from Douglas School should be on a bus as long as it takes me to drive across the state.
Yeah.
It's kind of my thought. It's a very long time on a bus.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you know if the consultant is trying to project or take into consideration capulation influx? My understanding is that the class may be larger. So is there any way that he's considering what's going to be happening in the next two, three years or something?
I think we're looking, I think we're looking at the present.
Yeah. So that's one thing, I think Courtney mentioned that, you know, this doesn't factor. So this is all based on current ridership. So it does not take into account additional, you know, students that, that might come in.
And actually, this is only for the, for the procurement process because actually, once we're done with the procurement, immediately thereafter, we're going to be moving all students up. Students are going, going to be going from one tier to another tier. We're going to take care of the move-ins, moves-outs, school choice.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of-
Yeah. So, so, you know, to kind of help address some of those variables, you know, we, we did give them some, some guide rails around, you know, what the max capacity of each bus is and how, how close we would want to get to capacity. So I forget what, I'm going to try to call, I think it was like 47 students was the max for high school, middle school, knowing that it would normally fit, I forget, 59 is, is our normal threshold?
No, what I-
53? And we said we would go-
No, I'm sorry, no.
Yeah, I don't have that in my sheet in front of me.
59, yeah.
But, but the capacity that I created was how many you can fit on a bus because high school students are much larger.
That's right, you know.
But you did have discussion, though, about having some leeway.
And then we said, yeah, we wouldn't, we want to stay at 85% of whatever the capacity is-
Right, yeah.
-so that there's room for students moving in district, you know, that, that kind of stuff. So, you know, we, we did try to factor some of that in, in doing this.
What about the, the kids that get, that are dropped off and brought regularly, like they're regularly, the kids that are driven to school? There's nothing that we can do to put something in writing for a parent to say, I will, my child will never be on the bus whatsoever?
No, because by-
Like legally, we can't do that right now.
They need to have a seat available for everybody.
Because things can change. Situations can change.
That was one thing that we saw the data kind of showed out is that ridership in the morning is lower than, than the afternoons. I think a lot of folks probably dropping their kids off on the way to work and then letting them take the, you know, the bus home and, you know, they're, you know, latchkey kind of situation.
I have a question, just the idea of monitors. Are there cameras on all our buses?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Part of the contract, I incorporate that in the contract. I think everybody does that these days.
I figured. But, I mean, it doesn't replace having an actual person, you know, monitor on the bus, but.
Can I, so we have to provide a seat reach, but if you charge a fee, those that aren't, that we are required to, to bus, if they don't pay the fee, there's no bus spot for them. So why can't we say, well, if your kid will never take the bus, you sign that, you know, that might save us 50. I mean, we all know people whose kids have never, ever gotten on a bus.
I, I think what we're doing already kind of accounts for that in, again, in, in that 85% capacity that we're using. So we're really only look, you know, in the numbers that we're planning towards in rerouting this, we're only looking at kids that are actually riding the bus over a certain period of time here. So if we have those cases where if someone isn't riding the bus right now, we're, we're kind of already not accounting for them as we're re-gearing these routes, I think, to a certain extent. We are, we are leaving, you know, some capacity there. But again, I think the capacity of the buses is less the issue. We can probably still fit more buses, you know, even the proposal that he has with down to 10 routes instead of 13 routes is probably still not plenty. I think some of, some of, a couple of routes got a little bit heavy, got close to the thresholds. A lot of the buses still didn't, didn't really approach the thresholds. It's just the drive time. It's, it's the distance more than the, than the capacity that we're dealing with.
But I think to speak to what you're talking about, I think the way the law reads is that within a public school, regardless of, I don't think you can create any sort of written document because that is owed to a student within a public school.
Yeah, we're required to have seats available for anybody eligible.
You have to.
Eligible.
Have to have the seats if they're not paying if we have a budget.
But you have, within a public school, everybody has the opportunity. You know what I'm saying?
Well, the law says that you can, you can, you can charge a fee. It's the same thing. It's only the ones that, in other words, you can say, we actually could, the school committee could create a policy saying that only those eligible under Mass general law will get school bus. I don't know anybody that does. I'm just saying, you could, okay? And then you could further state, maybe the following year if you wanted to, and say that, that we'll allow those not eligible, but you have to pay. But those are two separate things. You need to have the seats available for those eligible. And to be honest with you, because of the town and the configuration and also because of other reasons like the high school, it was decided and talked about over and over again, just the configuration of the town and how, how far out people, how far out they live.
Almost everybody's eligible.
Although most of them are eligible.
But I think, yeah, so I'm still unsure if we have the answer to your question, though. So if we, if we did decide to go to a fee structure and some people chose not to pay the fee, they, they would basically, we wouldn't have to account for them in the planning of our, of our bus routes, right?
Right, exactly.
So how come that doesn't apply? How come we can't have someone wave out even in a non-fee structure? I think that's something we'd have to-
Not as the eligible, either way, you can't do it.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm sorry, I do just, I should have had a couple of folks that are, that are speaking, for those at home, introduce themselves. So Becky, could you introduce yourself? You've spoken a couple of times here.
Becky Charnyak.
And address as well.
Becky Charnyak, I live at 10 Main Street.
And Leslie-
Leslie Crowe, 22d West.
Thank you. So, protocol a little bit. So, so I, I don't know-
Well, we're going to come back with more information, obviously, so, because we're waiting for him to come back from vacation with some more details.
Yeah, but I guess, I want the committee to, you know, to figure out how we, how we deal, you know, is, is it a policy where we say, we're, we're not going to have bus routes that are, you know, have ridership along within X number of minutes? Like, I don't think we have that in place right now. And again, we do have some routes that are, that are in the 45, 50-minute range. But this proposal will definitely put more kids into that 45, 50-minute range.
And then you're going to get more kids who are being driven and increase the traffic at the schools. I mean, just hearing you say that about, like, the earliest time would then be 6:28 or 6:29.
Yeah.
I'm guessing that's my kid because we already get picked up at like 6:35 or some ungodly hour.
Right, yeah. Everything kind of backs back a little bit to make it, yeah.
And, yeah.
Yeah, we go at 6:35, yeah.
You know, 6:35. And, and that's tough enough, you know, to, to try to go, he won't be thrilled when I tell him he has to get up even earlier, but I just wonder what the-
In the winter months, it's dark. The other piece of it is if, if the, if the routes run late at the elementary and primary school at 4 o'clock in the wintertime, it's starting to get dark and they'll be getting off. It's, it's-
There's a lot of factors to consider.
I just wonder what the traffic-
And I think I'll have to see it in writing, too, what he comes up with.
I just, I just wonder what, I mean, the traffic already is crazy for drop-offs and pickup.
I read this point earlier today as well, just when we were discussing admin. If you think about the students that are at Sunset Drive, which is essentially GBI-
Yeah.
-because of where their bus stop is, they have to actually leave town, do the bus route, and then they're dropped off on their way back to town.
In the afternoon, right?
Right, in the afternoon. So they're the last picked up coming into school and the last dropped off going home.
Right.
So for them to live two minutes from school could take them 45 to 50 minutes to get home.
But they are changing everything, though. They are, they are moving kids from one bus to another.
So that might be addressed.
It's going to be a whole different, yeah.
In defense, yeah, that might be addressed because he has reshaped some of the, some of the routes.
Yeah, but I think in a case like that, I think, again, because we don't want to have kids crossing over-
Right.
-Route 16-
Right.
-we're going to drop them off on the right side of the road. After all, if they have to drive all the way out to Wallem Lake and then not get dropped off, you know, they have to drive by their house and wave, "My mom, I'll be back in 40 minutes."
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's what happens.
Yeah.
In the name of safety. So.
We had a, when, in the previous town that I lived in, when my son was in kindergarten, he had a 50-minute bus ride. It's just the way it was. It was a 50-minute bus ride and there was, you know, that was it.
And I think Courtney and Kevin have been a little, you know, I don't know, frustrated with what I want to put words in your mouth. But I've, I've been very open to, you know, because I, growing up, I had 50-minute bus rides. I was like, hey, it's 50 minutes. But, you know, you know, so, but I think they have, they have very valid concerns. And I, I want to be sensitive to that. And I want, I want, you know, this needs to be a committee decision. It can't be a, a me decision or, you know, anybody else. So, so I don't know if we kind of come to a decision tonight, but it's something we are going to have to act on probably quickly and probably at our next meeting.
Right.
We're going to have to make a call on what to do. I'm going to, I'll just state my opinion now, having seen the data that I have seen, I, I think we have to, in terms of at least reducing one bus and-
I agree 100%.
I'm probably, I'm probably willing to take the risk of two, knowing that the pain will probably fall more to Mr. Maines and Ms. Keegan and others. I, I say that fully aware of that and I, I don't say it lightly either, but I do know that there's, in order for us to be, continue to be able to invest in our program, there's going to have to be pain someplace in order to do that.
Right.
So I just, I just want to, I'll keep that in, in mind. So.
I agree. And you, you stated perfect. And, you know, it's not something that I think that if we had choice to avoid longer, yes, but we have to start making some decisions that might impact different areas that we could, so we can save other things. And it's not fun, but it's not, we have to figure out something.
It will, I think that sums it up accurately. It'll come to that. We'll have to make a decision at that point.
Okay. Any, any other discussion?
I just have one quick question that's, doesn't sound like it's related, but it is. The walkway outside in front of the school, it's always a topic, but the one that's right outside the school, when you go onto 16-
Which school?
This school right here.
High school?
There's no, obviously, there's no sidewalk.
Correct.
Okay. So there's nothing ever that can change to have a sidewalk put, like, it has nothing to do with us?
No.
No. There was a comment about, part of the economic development plan that the town is working on is potentially, you know, developing Route 16 further. And Mr. Wojcik and half-jestly said, you know, if, if we, if we get some, you know, grant money to, to do that, you know, we can look at putting a sidewalk in for you. It might help solve some of your problems. I have no idea how serious he was about that or-
I just wanted to put that out as a-
-how far off that might be, but-
Buggering some of it here.
Nothing I would count on. Let's put it that way. So.
Always a concern is the fact-
Even if you've got sidewalks, you still have the hill to deal with.
Right.
You need an escalator.
The concern has always been that when you have the snow, the road gets even narrower. And now you've got guy going one way, guy going another way, and a kid trying to walk down the hill as well. And it's, it's, it's tight.
If I can say, we didn't put sidewalks here.
Yeah.
Sure. The cost of putting the sidewalks in because of ADA, every so, every bit-
You'd have to like-
-it had to be flat.
Right.
And it was exorbitant.
Right.
So that's why in getting this, the zoning.
Yeah. 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 So I think even if we got sidewalks out on 16, I think dealing with our driveways, it would still be, be an issue. So, okay. Have we exhausted that topic for now?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for all being patient and entertaining that. Let's move on to our consent agenda. We have our March 6, 2019 meeting minutes. I did not see any issues with them. It was a long set of minutes. Do we know how pages long, Ms. Keegan?
Um, yeah, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance. I didn't look at these until-
No worries.
Yeah, I'm looking at, and the part about the 2020 budget.
Okay, second page.
I see a couple of things already. And to be honest, I don't have my budget stuff with me to actually-
Correct it?
Um, yeah. I wonder if we can just table it until, if you don't mind, until the next meeting?
Okay.
I don't want to have anything, especially about the budget being here that's incorrect.
Sounds like we might have some issues with these, but we don't have the corrections. So anyone mind tabling these until next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so let's move on. Next item is our FY '20 school year calendar.
So we put the calendar in there for you and we left next year's graduation on Friday for right now, which I think makes some sense. I did have opportunity to sit with the leadership of the Douglas Teachers Association. The only question they had, they had time to look at this in advance. The only question that they had on it, and I'm trying to get to my page here, is the date of the, in September for the parent-teacher, I'm sorry, open house, open house. They are scheduled for the 10th, which is a Tuesday, for the primary school and the elementary school to have their open house on Tuesday, and then the high school and the middle school on Thursday, which is sort of the traditional way in which we've done it. Their question was, could it be moved to the 11th? My only concern with that is now if you're a parent, you're doing back-to-back nights if you have children in two different schools. I think that the reason why there was a space in there was that it wasn't back-to-back nights because it's conceivable you could have a student in the elementary school and a student in the middle school and a student in the high school. And it was, it was, they thought it was too much to be back-to-back. That was the only thing that they were looking to make a change to was to see if we could move September 10th to September 11th.
Does it make it easier for the district in some way to go 11th and 12th versus 10th and 12th?
No, actually, no. No, no, there's no, I, I think it makes it more challenging for the district because now you have to answer to why are they back-to-back nights? That's That's just my concern, my, my take.
Yes, speaking as a parent, whether it's back-to-back or, or Tuesday, Thursday, it's still a disruption of schedule throughout the week and, you know, it, but I think it's, it's a worthwhile disruption of schedule to, you know, to be able to attend the open houses, so every, every parent's gonna have different schedules with their kids, spending on activities and sports and maybe Wednesday interrupts and maybe Tuesday and, you know, who knows? So I think to try to get to that, so I think it just comes down to what, what works for the, for the, you know, the district, um, as a whole, is my opinion.
My, 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 my take on it would be that the, the, having it on the tenth and the twelfth, I think, is gonna be more favorably received. But there's no significance to moving it to the eleventh if, if that's what the, what the committee would like to do.
So, we're looking to approve this calendar tonight?
Yes.
This will be published to parents at this point, or no?
Well, that's, that's the goal, is to get it out and, and so parents can look at the calendar for next year.
I wasn't here at last meeting, but I watched from home and Josh had brought up the point of the first week of school, maybe leaning towards half-days, was that discussed at all, or?
So I, I had some conversation with, um, the leadership of the DTA just the other day on this matter. They, they, they raised some concerns. I think that there had been something like this previously. It didn't, it wasn't well-received. The other piece of it is that three of our, three of our four buildings are in fact air-conditioned and there really is no need to do the, the half-days. So we sort of, based on the fact that there was some concerns raised in previous years, we seemed to come to a consensus that doing the full days was, was the, the better option.
Hope for new heat.
Yeah, I mean, it was, last year was, um... We had to move the kids two days out of the, out of the cycle and we actually moved them two days and I think we early dismissed one day based on the temperatures.
And we may run into that in June, so you never know.
Right. So, that's kind of where we were with the Jillian. Certainly if the committee wants to, to go in that, that direction, that's, that's your call. It does add three more half-days to the, to the school calendar as well.
All right. So any other discussion, questions, concerns?
So the only other thing was that, that we left graduation as of right now on the calendar for May twenty-ninth.
Right.
As the typical Friday end of the year, uh, which, as I said, could be revisited and revised. The calendar could be revised.
Okay. If nothing else, I'll extend a motion to approve the Douglas Public Schools two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school calendar as presented. I can't make the motion. A motion from Jillian and a second from Julie, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. We are approved. Thank you, Mr. Maines. Um, school two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school choice.
So this is, uh, an obligation that the committee has. Now I find my calendar. We need to come forward and, and, and discuss the, the, the status of next year. So at this point, I am requesting a vote of the committee to continue Douglas as a school choice district. At your place, you have the following information relative to our current enrollment of choice students. You can see that the total is a hundred and thirty-one. Given our current class size, I'm recommending we accept limited additional numbers of choice students for the nineteen, twenty school year. We will monitor the numbers as we have done in the past. If we feel that there's, there's a need to close a grade level, we can do, we will do that at the start of the school year.
So, semi-unrelated question, 'cause, um, just, just noticing fewer students, school choicing at, at the lower grades versus the upper, is that, do you know if that's normal from history? I know you haven't been in this role forever, but...
I haven't been in this role forever, but I, I know that it tends to be more the, it's a lot of what, what you see here is students who might be attending, um, some of the...
Webster Elementary, then they come here for high school.
Or they, or Saint, is it the Saint Louis School?
Okay.
Catholic schools and then they, at, at, at middle school, they, they, they come over to the high, uh, over to Douglas. Same thing with, um, Lady of the Valley and, and Uxbridge and somebody.
I also think too, though, like, we've had to kinda cap it off at the...
Well, based on enrollments as well. But there, there are, there's still us, we, we still have some grade levels that we've closed, but, but that were open at the beginning of the year, so we had some space, but...
Okay, thank you. Semi-related. So, so we're, we're just voting on that we are going to be a school choice district this year.
And we will come back in September and take a vote on grade levels, uh, as to whether or not we wanna keep them open or we wanna close them, based on some enrollments and where we are.
I think we, we've been over the summer, don't we?
We did, uh, we did it in the summer and then we did it again, I think it was in October, I think.
I'd like to keep that schedule again, you know, revisit in late July, early August first, and then again in September.
Probably be early August, 'cause then we'll, by that time, we, we have some of the move-ins and, and so forth.
Okay.
So we're just approving that we will be a school choice district.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve, um, Douglas Public Schools to be school choi, a school choice district for twenty nineteen to twenty twenty.
And we have a motion from Jillian.
Second.
And a second from Lisa. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. We are a school choice district for next year.
What is football cooperative again?
Mr. Romano's back?
I thought I missed a couple meetings, I didn't, I thought this would be all set.
It's, it's been a, um...
This is the Jason Voorhees.
I think it's, it's, I think it's really important for everybody to understand that this was nothing that we precipitated. We are, we are being responsive to what has been sort of sent our way.
Right.
So last time we met, um, we had shared with you that there was, um, a, a vote of no from the Southern Worcester County League, the Swickle League, to Uxbridge, where they had requested a co-op with Douglas joining them. Sutton had granted that our, our players who are presently playing were grandfathered in, so they can continue to play with them. We don't have a signed agreement with Sutton as of yet of an approved MIAA co-op. So my suggestion is that we table this for the time being, but it looks like the only option that's gonna be available to us is a two-year commitment back with Sutton for the, for football again. We had talked, and Josh can give you some information, but we, the, the thought was that perhaps the principals at the Swickle would get together and maybe change their minds. I don't know what you heard from Mike Rubin.
Yeah, I, um, so I, when, when the, when the Swickle voted against the, um, co-op, and it, and it was basically because Uxbridge is already a very competitive program. They don't need our help. So you're looking at the other teams playing against them, saying, "No, we're not going to give you an, an extra advantage when you're already going to be finishing in the top half of the division." So the, it was rejected. So Mike Rubin, the principal at Uxbridge, and I, we talked about maybe sending out a letter to the principals, just kind of saying, "Look, this is the reason that we're looking for this. It, it isn't, you know, we're not chasing after the best program that we can possibly get." It just made sense in terms of if there, if the Sutton program wasn't gonna continue and it just makes sense geographically and things like that to have our kids play there. When Mike Rubin talked to some of the other athletic directors, they said, "Well, it's not like they're saying our kids can't play somewhere. We can go back to play at Sutton again." And, um, so point taken, but, um, so what I wanted to do was send out a letter to those principals, just sort of explaining like where, you know, what, what prompted us to look, that we weren't just looking to, um, latch on to a program that was really successful or shopping around for the best program, so that if something comes up down the line, um, with the Douglas Sutton program in the future, we, that that door is still open, that the Swickle principals aren't gonna say, "No, you, you're the guys who just were looking for a competitive program." You know, I mean, I, I think the kids do wanna play in Sutton, they do. But I think the problems that Sutton was facing in having the long-term continued to that program, they're all still there. You know, none of them went away. So, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with going back. It's what the kids want anyway, so I'm fine with, with forming a new co-op with Sutton. And, and when I've talked to the principal at Sutton, he said that, you know, they, they feel the town has spoken to them. They want to have a football program there. So he told me that his goal now is to make that program as, as sustainable and viable as he can moving forward and it's certainly better by having our kids in it than it is just Sutton kids alone. So I'm fine with going back in, into their program. I just wanna leave, like, I don't want burnt bridges with the Swickle League in case two years from now Sutton's in the same position again and our kids need a place to play football.
Or even, even as early as next year, if it turns out not to be viable and Sutton decides to fold the tents. And it's important, as Josh mentioned, to, to, to everybody, for everybody to understand that this was precipitated because Sutton looked to go to Millbury, which left us...
Out.
Out. And so that's why we looked to, um, Uxbridge being, being a neighboring community to see if we could, we could get in with them so that we could continue to offer our students the opportunity to play football. They, their league has voted it down. As it turns out, Sutton's school committee voted down the, the co-op with Millbury. They're now back looking, so they've reached back out to us. So I, I think what you could do if you wanted to is to vote this one way or the other, pending, in, pending the approval of the MIAA, which I'm, I, we already had a co-op, so I can't imagine that they're not going to have a co-op. Or you can table it, one or the other.
I guess before we decide that, so, um, question, and again, I, I think I've seen stuff about a bill banning Pee-wee football. Does that extend to high school? I think there's something going before. I've seen some petitions floating around.
Like in the state legislature?
There's a, there's a movement to try to end tackle football at the younger ages.
Make it all flag football.
Won't impact.
Doesn't impact high school?
Kids can't play until eighth grade.
Until eighth grade, okay, thank you. Yeah, I didn't know the details of it, so...
They can play flag.
Up until eighth grade, thank you.
So would you probably run for grants or your...
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that doesn't impact us, that there's no change for us.
So again, you could either vote to approve or not approve the co-op with the caveat pending, um, documentation from Sutton. I know they've applied, I don't think they've heard back yet. Or you can wait, or you can table it.
And have a strong opinion about?
I don't either. I'll do either one, it doesn't matter.
I think probably just wait until it's...
Okay. Very good. We wanted to make sure you were in, in, you were aware of the status of where it was.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romano.
Is that all that I have now?
I think that's it.
You're dismissed.
I'm gonna go watch more video and try to track down the...
Very good.
CSI Douglas.
We heard you did it that.
Okay, uh, move on to our school business and operation manager report.
Okay, the first thing I have for you this evening are transfers, um, general budget transfers number eight. And basically this, these are all the transfers that you will see that are needed to be done in the general fund budget report that I provided to you this evening as well. So basically going through the entire budget, um, you know, with all the, preparing the budget for FY twenty and everything. I needed to get back to FY nineteen. So just basically moving funds around all throughout the budget. And just a few are from, um, the administrators, but most of them are moving money around. Quite a bit, um, as you can see, needed in, um, building maintenance, all throughout the district. Had quite a few things that we've had to attend to this year, so, um, trying to cover those lines as well.
In the, in the most recent buildings as well, right? The most recent buildings.
Oh, that's been since, yeah, the beginning, yeah, unfortunately. Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, I actually, it's only the first page, because the second page is just a signature page.
Okay. Any questions? I'll take a motion.
Uh, make a motion to approve FY twenty nineteen general fund budget transfer number eight. School committee meeting March twentieth, twenty nineteen.
We have a motion from Jillian.
Second.
And a second from Lisa. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none.
Thank you. I had the correct date this time, too.
Yes.
Oh, the correct year. You know, sometimes during the year, Jean and I are working on three different fiscal years at one time, so that does happen sometimes.
It's amazing to have more.
FY, uh, the next thing on the agenda of the FY two thousand nineteen reclassifications, number seven. And the first one is just a typo, as you can see, the account for school lunch is only one digit off from the account for school choice. So I'm fixing that. And the next one down is I'm reclassing from the general fund over to the town insurance account. This was something that we sought restitution from through legal channels. And we had some, uh, young men on the, on the roof of the middle school and did some damage there. So they were required, we did receive eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars towards that. So I'm moving, um, the, the, the whole invoice, the, the total cost of the school district was just over fifteen hundred. But we did receive, um, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars back. I think it was five hundred from one student and three twenty-eight from the other, something like that. So I'm reclassing that. And the last one I'm just, um, reclassing, um, from Telstone, from the, um, the, uh, bus transportation budget line to the general fund bus transportation, the operating budget bus transportation line. And that's just for an extra trip, um, that we had. I think that was one of the days that we did provide busing for, um, but then we stopped it after that, yeah.
It was, that was the one day of the middle school had teacher, parent-teacher conferences that the high school didn't.
We had to do something like that, yeah.
We eliminated, I think, two of them, the one that we couldn't eliminate.
Right.
All right.
That's it for those.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
Any questions, over?
I'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty nineteen reclassifications, number seven. School committee meeting March twentieth, twenty nineteen.
Motion from Jillian. And a second from Lisa. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none. Thank you.
And the next thing on the agenda is my FY two thousand, oh, actually, I should say eighteen. I should say eighteen, yeah, we're not even through nineteen yet. Didn't catch that when I looked at the agenda. See, again, too many years to look at. So this is the DESE end-of-the-year audit report.
Is that our...
Uh, yes. Yeah, there's like nothing there, which is a good thing. So the only thing is, is that, I don't know if you recall my, telling you about that terrible grant that, um...
Yes.
That we bought, that the DOI, everything was done, all, yeah. So it ended up being put, I put on the wrong, um, line. Should've been in column five instead of another column, so remember whatever column number it was. So anyway, I moved that. So other than that, everything went great. In fact, they didn't even have to come on site. So that's the first time we've, yeah, they did everything up in Nashville, New Hampshire, and everything went great.
Great. So every, every school gets audited every year?
Yes, for their DESE end-of-the-year report, correct, yeah. And first DESE, they can't even, the auditors can't even do the audit until they, the DESE comes out with the compliance audit guidelines, because they change each year. And it was a little bit like this year, actually. And then, um, for this evening, I also provided the two thousand nineteen general fund budget report. And as stated, the negatives that you see there are being taken care of with the transfers that were done this evening. The only one thing, um, that I do need to, um, I'm trying to, uh, look into, see if I can resolve on page five, as you'll see, we have an account number one hundred thirty-six hundred eight, fifty-three thousand, from the high school flood. We paid for fire department to come, they had to come and do detail. Then we also had custodians, so it all went in here. And I'm trying to see if we can get an interim payment from the insurance company so I can reclass that amount to the insurance account on the town side. Otherwise, we will be, um, eating that, so to speak. Because it's such a huge project, although things aren't going very well with the cabinets, and that was one of the biggest holdups, so I'm still waiting to hear back from Maya with regard to that.
Anyone have, have any questions?
That's good. Yeah, on the subject of flood and going back to budgets, I think, I think the town administrator mentioned, you know, so I think it was great that we were covered by insurance, but that comes back to, in our next property insurance proposal for this year. I think there's a ten percent increase, probably partially related to their, such a large claim this year, I think. I think he said that, I don't know if that makes sense or, no?
I don't know if that's, yeah.
So...
Yeah, it was definitely a large claim.
All right. So just last, um, items of business, also, any topics not anticipated that we should be covering?
I do have one thing I just wanted to update you that, that is what you just mentioned. So they have begun the installation of the cabinetry downstairs in the biology lab. The whole top level has come in, they're, they're putting the lab stations together now, much sooner than we thought. We thought this was, wasn't gonna happen this year. We honestly thought that we would be out of that room the whole year. So, um, they have begun there, they'll do that room, they'll go into the room that's, there's a, an in-between room where they store, you know, microscopes and so forth. They'll, that, those cabinets will, will get done and then there's a desk that has to go into the other lab. So we'll be hopefully swapping everybody back out after April vacation and everybody will be back in their rooms and at that point, all of the rooms will have been...
They'll be complete.
Will have been addressed, yeah.
Awesome.
So, um, and the, and the cabinets look almost identical and that they're of the same, same quality.
Excellent. Yeah, so thank you to our students and teachers for...
Yeah, they helped.
Being very cooperative, I think, with, you know, the entire situation throughout this year. So we have, um, upcoming meeting on April third, um, there is gonna be our, our public hearing on our budget.
So that's, is that in auditorium?
That'll be in the auditorium downstairs. We have also invited, um, Senator Fatman and Representative McKenna to come in. So that will be a part of our agenda as well. I think that's ended up being when Mr. Fatman joined us last year, ended up being during our hearing. Be, hopefully, a little different discussion with them. I think he was just kind of there to listen to what was going on and then have us yell at him at the end of it, um, to a certain extent, but... I, I'd like it to be a little more productive this time, um, so I think, you know, I think you all saw the email. I, I'd like this to be a little bit of us reporting on to them, a lot of things that we have been able to do, progress we have been able to make, challenges we still continue to face, help...
And just let, let, no, that will not be live. So if they wanna see it, they'll have to be here.
That's right.
Like that, Scott. Come and see us, 'cause you're not gonna be able to watch it at home. Come down and be there. Yeah, not live, you'll be able to watch it later on.
Watch it on film, right?
So our public hearing, yeah, because it's in the auditorium, it is not broadcast live. So if you wanna be part of the process and see it...